Not that I agree with this group, but I do support their right to be where they are. Because there were times when white people could not even be there in this city. And then I wanted, and I mean it, equality in power. It's not because I've been there, not being mayor. It's mayor came to see, and you know what I have. We are more powerful than these people who are out there in the park. I have been out there three times, and I have been accepted very well, even at night. And I did not fear being out there. I sat down, and I listened to what they had to say. They can educate you on some issues. If you are not afraid, go out there and sit and listen to them. So I am here in the hands of their ability to use that part, because I am protesting.
Thank you, Ms. Pittman. This time we'll ask that the clerk please read the order.
Unreversing in whole or in part, conditional approval of Occupy Jackson's application for a special events permit.
Some of it, actually.
They moved it properly to second. Questions come into this time. At this time, we'll ask if we could get someone from the administration or Officer Brown to talk to us about why, what was the condition, conditions that politics could deny. That's a request of Councilman Blasen.
Peter Taylorson, City Attorney. Officer Brown and the Special Events Committee worked with the Office of the City Attorney to decide what was the appropriate manner in which to respond to the request. The request was for a permanent to occupy a city park 24 hours a day for approximately two months with up to 5,000 people. The Constitution of the United States, and let me say this, there are two documents which I hold near and dear to my heart. The first, and Ms. Pittman already referenced it, would be the Bible. The second would be the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution says that people have a right to free speech and free assembly. As that Constitution, our Constitution, has been interpreted over the years by the United States Supreme Court, it says that there must be reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on those rights. Accordingly, Legal Department working with the Special Events Committee conditionally granted the permit for the time Mr. Henderson has described, and other conditions that were described as reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on first amendment rights. Now, on the other hand, if this body decides it wants to extend that for the entire two months, 24 hours a day, this body will set a precedent. And anyone else who comes before this body, before this city, and says they want to protest, will be entitled to the exact same treatment. So if you have a hate group that comes forward, and you don't like that message, you have to give the 24-hour access for the same amount of time. Because you can't discriminate based on the message. I think a lot of what these people say is a good message. But I can tell you as your legal counsel, I'm concerned about you setting a precedent. That means that everyone else, regardless of their message, gets to do the same thing. Now, the administration also took into consideration that all parks in the city of Jackson close at dusk. That's a policy of the Parks and Recreation Department. We have two park rangers and 55 parks. Two park rangers, 55 parks. All parks in the city of Jackson close at dusk. Yes, sir?
Is that new? Because there are a couple of parks that have signs that say till 10 o'clock.
I understand that that's always been a policy. You're bringing something new to me, Councilman Yarborough, which was said to 10 o'clock.
I see.
Mr. Jimson, where is he, A.C. Jimson?
Yeah, I see him shaking his head in the affirmative of something.
Yes.
Does. Okay.
That's where I got my information.
Okay.
Again, Councilman Yarborough, I think, you know, you bring up a valid point, obviously, that some parks are open at 10, but that's a little bit different than overnight occupation.
You're right. And I made that point, which could lead us to some kind of a compromise later on. But I don't want city legal to be on record as stating that all parks close at dusk, that they're dusk to dawn, and that ain't true. By the way, it sounds like some signage that's up in places that say 10 o'clock, but that's neither here nor there.
I appreciate that. Obviously, I'm only as good as my information.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilman Lumumba?
The request is to do this until, what, the 26th of December?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The request is to have the occupation until the 26th of December.
Right. The order before us allows us to reverse in whole or in part the conditional approval.
I understand what the city attorney has said in terms of setting a precedent. However, I suppose if anybody do a demonstration at all, that same argument could be used if the Ku Klux Klan were walking here tomorrow and asked for a permit period. I don't think that that would be a reason to deny people permits. I mean, not to deny this group's permit in any event. I can tell you right now, if Ku Klux Klan walks in here and asks for a permit tomorrow, I'm going to vote against it.
Council, council, please don't say that publicly, because you're just blocking us to litigation. And you know, maybe we need to go on a closed session.
Yeah, maybe so. In any event, I don't think we can allow that possibility to control what we do with demonstrations, which to me are worthy. And regardless of whether they're worthy or not, I think it's a standard which we, which people have attacked on a national level, raises good questions about the increasing disparity of wealth in the community and in the society as a whole, which is frightening at this particular point. It's a statement to the world that people do not appreciate the fact that something like 1% of the population controls the majority of wealth in this country. And really, it's getting worse, but this is really not new. I was in law school in 1970, late 1960, and our law professor, property class, told us that that was a fact in the United States. So it's about time that people at least speak up to us, and then what needs to be done about non-people. But it is obscene, it's obscene to have that kind of a situation. But without out speaking anymore to the merits of the demonstration, I think that we should do it. And like I said, I don't think the fear of what may be applied for it should stop us from doing what this particular...
Councilman Baras, Simone, then Councilman Woodwell.
Thank you. I want to make it very clear that I believe strongly in the right to assemble and the right to protest. And as far as the merits of your positions, although that's not what we're here to decide on today, I agree with many of your positions. But that's a personal, personal opinion of mine. I represent the downtown area, and I have an obligation to the people who live downtown, the churches that try to function in the downtown urban setting, the offices and businesses that are down there. And I represent them also, and I have to take that into consideration. I've gotten many calls from people in the last few days, not disagreeing with your positions on things, almost no one brought up the merits of your effort, but that they wanted to be protected too. I also am concerned, we're going into the holiday season, as you know, if you read the newspaper and watch television, we have a shortage of police officers. We're going into the holiday situation where our officers are going to be overworked, overburdened, trying to ensure the safety of everyone in the city. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about your safety and whether we are equipped to manage all of that right now. I just can't tell you what a difficult decision this is for me, but this is precedent-setting. And if this happens and this is approved, then from now on, anyone can ask for two months to occupy any park in Jackson. And we would never be able to decline that again. It would be an immediate court case. So I sympathize with you, and I hope that we can reach some compromise. But the 24/7, that doesn't work. It impacts the quality of life of people who live and work in the area, and we have to check that into consideration too. Thank you.
Councilman Woodwell?
I'd like to make an amendment, and then I will address my comments during that discussion here.
Before your amendment, you were here from Councilman Tillman today, so it's your view of all issues.
Yes, I've been thinking about it since the last week, trying to gather different information. And I understand that people feel like the struggle could be hard for our society. And I lived through a lot of that, civil rights movement.
Get your sign.
But anyway, I got it down, five persons, and some of them already in the building. Here it is. First person.
You have five minutes, Till.
We're a Jackson police, we're a Jackson police, so we're Jackson police, we're signed to monitor the park. We're Jackson police, department, we're there to monitor the park. What do we do right now?
We're already doing it.
Okay, so that's no problem. Number two, we would make sure that the park remain in a fair, fairer condition. I know one of the guys that he picked up the paper, off it all night, that's a problem to answer. Number three, does the group plan to come back to the council at a later date to express another permit to occupy the park around the clock or within it, till December 26th, and that's it? Number four, what will the government say to the guard that they can't do during regular park hours from dusk to dawn? What goes on for the rest of the night? Ms. Pittman makes a little bit of sense. Number five, you know, I'll say, I'll say, I'll say, all right, number five. But anyway, we are here to reverse all of the reverse of all in part, the conditions, which we can make amendments and try to work out something that's worth most concern. And I hope you can do that for me today.
Still, then, do you want to try to get some answers to those questions that you had from the Occupy group? We had a question about whether they're coming back later.
Right.
Let's ask the appeal to come, because you filed a petition, right?
At this time, Occupy Jackson has no plans to... Occupy Jackson is run by a direct democracy. There's a difference between us and anybody else who comes up here and asks for a permit.
Just answer the question before we go back. All right. The question, you answered that question. Was there another question? What will demonstrators be doing in the park that they can't do during regular park hours?
We're there for informational purposes. We want to be there for informational purposes 24 hours a day, seven days a week, because some people work at night, so their nights are the times that are wasted. There's some times they come down and ask us for information. We want to be there.
Satisfying questions, Till. Simone?
You know, and I don't, I'm not referring to Mr. Tillman's questions. I think they're good questions, and it was good to get answers to them. When we started talking about, I'm trying to figure out what discomfort is it to people in downtown Jackson who are working on buildings for a demonstration to be in the park, especially for just two months period of time? I don't see any exception. The park is a park. It's isolated in many respects from the blocks and people's interest and access to the towns. Secondly, so it doesn't create any real public havoc. And the second thing I caution us against, when the civil rights demonstration will come down in this city, and I've been part of some that, where people that set up here in this very room where we are, this is permission, where they would do the same kinds of things. Question, say, we really would love for you to be at the demonstration, but begin to ask questions about the objective of the demonstration, effective of the demonstration. That's not our business. These folks who are trying to put on this demonstration have a right to make the statement they want to make, uninterrupted, and long this is not a danger to the health and the safety of people in Jackson. I didn't hear anything from what Councilman, Councilman Simone said, to show me that it's a danger or a threat to the safety of anybody working in those big buildings. I go by the park virtually every day. And so I don't think that this is something that we should be doing.
All right. Let's go ahead and try to move forward with this. Will, are there any final remarks by any councilman?
I'm reserving my remarks for after the amendment.
Okay, all right. Any other final remarks?
Yeah, 26, the term of time is wide, 26 is the date.
A member of Occupy Jackson plans to make a gift to the city of Jackson, all these 46. That's why these 46 is... Judge.
Satisfying question. At this time, we will entertain amendment from the floor.
I would ask that we amend this order to state, take out the word reversing in the title and make it accepting. Take out the words or in part. Therefore, it would say, order accepting in hold the conditional approval of Occupy Jackson's application for a special events permit. The second to last paragraph, it would say, is therefore ordered the provision of the conditional approval of Occupy Jackson's application for a special event is hereby accepted. And the final would say, is further ordered that Occupy Jackson's application is approved with the following conditions, the conditions set forth by the permit department. Therefore, what the special use permit was accepted for would be accepted by this council, and only that.
All right. So that's a motion. It needs a second.
Second.
All right. It's been moved appropriately second. All in favor?
I'd like to hear it read back.
Discussion.
Okay. He wants to hear it read back as it was. All right. Then we'll say it again, and then we'll have the discussion.
Okay. This is going to say, order accepting in hold the conditional approval of Occupy Jackson's application for a special events permit. Second to last paragraph will say, basically, you'll take the last word reversed and make it say accepted. The last paragraph will say, is further ordered that Occupy Jackson's application is approved with the following condition, colon, the conditions set forth by the permit department. And if I could, I will explain. Essentially, what my amendment does is it accepts what the special use permit department has allowed. I've heard my colleagues' comments. I understand their concerns. I'm an attorney. I understand what free speech is. This is not free speech. This issue is a law and order issue. We have a law and order society in Jackson, Mississippi, and for the sake of the state of Mississippi, after we have the ability of two months' worth of hindsight to see what this Occupy movement is about, and what it's not about, we don't need to be overly accommodating, given the fact that these folks are really wanting 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We don't know what's going on in those tents. We don't know what's going on in encampment. We don't need encampment. We don't need encampment for them, we need encampment for these other groups that Mr. Lumumba brought up. We don't need encampment for anybody. They have the right to get out there and express their opinions, and there are plenty of places where they can do it. The mayor's office, the administration, has adequately accommodated those, and if they want to apply for additional permits or whatever, under limited or restricted situations, we can deal with them at that time. It is not in the best interest of the city to get wrapped up in a movement that is a non-movement. If somebody wants to occupy Jackson, they need to do it at a time and place that is dictated by the administration. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I'm, you know, doing it, one of the objectives of a demonstration is to do it at a time where you can show oppositions and forces of power, and to demonstrate that you have a problem with what the forces of power are doing. Maybe they have some problem with the fact that even though this is a council, which is predominantly black in the city, which is predominantly black, most of the business here in Jackson, something like only 15% of the business is black. Maybe that's part of their, their problem. Secondly, that statement by my brother over here, Councilman Woodwell, said, you know, Senator Bill, but couldn't say it better. I think that law and order nonsense, and the administration is in need for these kind of restraints. He spoke to that, it was possible, they've gone by regulations to this point, and so why should we further speak and let them express themselves the way they want to express themselves? We don't know what Councilman Woodwell is doing inside his house. And so we don't need to know what's happening inside his tents. Let's just go ahead and allow the demonstration.
We're exposing ourselves.
Let's move to vote.
Let me just make one statement, because I want to address the Bill of statement.
Y'all are out of order, Councilman Woodwell.
This amendment, this amendment follows the actions.
Councilman Woodwell, you are out of order. All in favor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All in favor of the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? We're voting, all in favor of the amendment? Amendment fails. All opposed. But I think we see that it has been opposed. All opposed. 4-2. Back to the main motion. This, the main motion, says that we will vote to reverse in hold or in part. Now, what that does is give us the opportunity to create some kind of compromise. Is that, is that the understanding from this language, or what?
That's correct, Councilman Yarborough.
Okay. With that being the case, let's move forward. I think what we'll do is probably need to look at how we'll break this up, because I don't know, I mean, if we're going to say we want to reverse it in hold or in part, either we're going to do, we're going to either reverse it in hold or we're going to reverse it in parts. I don't know.
I think the logical approach, Councilman Yarborough, would be for if all way folk to reverse in hold and give them their entire permit, and that if anyone else other than Councilman Woodwell wants to make a motion to somehow limit the reversal, that needs to probably be done at this time.
What's on the floor right now?
Nothing.
Well, what's on the floor is, in order reversing in hold or in part the conditional approval of Occupy Jackson's application.
The amendment failed, but reversal is still on the floor.
It's still there. It's still on the floor.
But if you read the whole reversal, it's ambiguous. It doesn't...
That's what we're trying to clear up. That's what we're trying to clear up.
And that's why I want to make a procedural point on that.
That's what we're trying to clear up. Because what we'll probably need to do is to break this amendment up, or break this order up, actually.
Somebody needs to move to accept the order that's before the council, and then state in there the conditions under which they are moving to accept it. They can state that they're moving to accept it in hold, or they can state they're moving to accept it in a different fashion, then we'll see if there's an appropriate second.
Well, I don't think I understand that. Because if we, are you saying move forward with a vote or move forward with a motion to accept the entire thing?
I think we move forward with a motion to accept the appeal and reverse the process in its entirety, and see if there's a second. If that dies for lack of...
Okay, I got you.
Then you would entertain a motion to reverse the appeal with whatever conditions the person who sponsored the motion would offer.
All right. So what we'll do, we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the reversal in hold. If it does not, and if it does not receive what it needs to move forward, then I'll ask for a motion to accept in part, and then we'll work out those details in that matter. Isn't that what you're saying, Councilman?
Yeah.
All right.
I would move to reverse the decision in hold.
That's it, man. All right. Let me explain what that motion is, so all six of you are on the same page. There's now a motion on the floor to reverse the special events coordinator, and there's been a second to approve granting a 24-hour a day permit through December 26th for access to the city park.
Are any other city parks where an application is brought forward?
No. This group's only asking for access in this particular park. We've talked about that as precedent-setting. That's it. Now going into that. The motion, the second that are before this body, is to allow this group to have 24-hour access to the city park under its protest.
Who's second is that?
Councilman Blasen.
A clerk, a clerk. The case has reared. We have done it, but if it did not, we'd come back and work out something.
Correct.
Correct, yes.
My motion is reverse in hold, which I understand it by the way it was displayed by the city attorney, that we give them the 24-hour access to the park until the 26th, and they're right.
Yes, certainly, because that's what they questioned.
Along with their conditions. Right. Along with the conditions that were stated in the application?
Yeah.
Okay.
You sure you want to second that, Mr. President?
Wait, they did hold and part.
Said in hold. He's saying in hold. You sure you want to second that?
Yeah, well, to reverse it in hold, which would mean that they would have 24-hour access to the park, and it would happen until the 26th of December. Is that the section that we do?
Yes. Because that's what they originally requested.
Right. And that's what I'm moving to do.
All right. So we have a motion. Okay, well, the second for in hold has been withdrawn, which means, which means that the motion dies for lack of a second. Now I entertain a motion to reverse in part.
Second.
They moved it properly second. So the order will read this way, which is what will be voted on. Order reversing in part the conditional approval of Occupy Jackson's application for a special events permit. Is that correct?
You need to specify the motion, the motion and second came so quickly. You need the motion and the second to specify what the reversal is regarding. In other words, you're reversing the decision of the administration to conditionally grant the permit. What conditions are you placing on there? You've already said you want some.
Yeah, one order.
Can I assist?
Yes.
Since we now have the reversal on the table, couldn't we take this amendment by amendment? I would be happy to offer the first one.
We could proceed, we could.
We could. What you can't proceed is on the motion and the second that's before you, because it does not have any specificity.
Absolutely. Which has been done before this council, and we've seen what that has done to us. But that won't happen this time. So what we'll do, we actually, no, if we're going to do that, we can proceed, actually, and then amend it. But my preference would be to deal with it in one package.
Y'all disagree?
Well, I mean, basically, what you got to do is this last paragraph after the colon, you got to set forth what the conditions were. The conditions I set forth that were rejected were that we accept what the... The conditions I set forth, they were rejected, were that we accept what the permit department said. So y'all got to come up with your own creativity.
Correct. And I second that.
Well, let me make a suggestion.